Next is a submission of appointments to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board, Wachamica County Commission on Aging, and the Lower Shore Workforce Alliance. And we have Mr. Bunky Loveman here, Director of Administration.
Evening, Mr. Loveman. How are you?
Hi, good evening. Bunky Loveman, Director of Administration. I do have a process question. So, the agenda item lists all three. So, would you like me to read sort of what each of them do? Or do you want to do one at a time?
We can do them all at once, and then we'll do the resolutions separately, yeah.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Okay, so the first one's the adult... And I do have staff members from each of these. So, if there's additional questions, they're here to answer.
Thanks.
The first one's the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. They meet twice per year in the spring and fall. Each member serves three years. And the board provides impartial oversight of public guardianship cases to ensure that wards receive services and treatment appropriate to their disabilities. Next, we have the Commission on Aging, Wachamica County Commission on Aging. They... The Commission on Aging assists older adults in the county with health, social, economic, and environmental challenges, and also advocates for older residents and provides assistance in resolving problems. And finally, we have Workforce Development Board. And like I said, we have a staff member here. This is federally mandated to work with major corporations, small businesses, educational institutions, community-based organizations, and labor organizations to provide workforce development leadership throughout the region.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration as Resolution Number 25-2024, confirming the appointment of Lori A. Brewster to the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board.
And motion to approve Resolution 25-2024. It's a move? Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Jeff, you have any discussion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of Resolution 25-2024, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution Number 26-2024, confirming the appointment of Lori A. Brewster as a member of the Wachamica County Commission on Aging.
And a motion from council to approve Resolution 25-2024. Second.
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 That was 26-2024.
I'm sorry, 26-24. And we have a motion second. Shane and Shaney. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution 26-2024 passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution Number 27-2024. This is confirming the appointment of Vicente Hernandez as a member of the Lower Shore Alliance. And I do have one correction to the resolution. The resolution currently says the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Alliance, and the word "investment" should not be in the title of the board. So, we can do a motion to amend that to remove the word "investment."
I'd like to make a motion to remove the word "investment" from Lower Shore Workforce Investment Alliance.
We're not changing it with another terminology. We're just removing it.
Just removing the word "investment."
That's motion second, please.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's carried. Amendment passes. Any further discussion on the Resolution 27-2024? All those in favor of Resolution 27-2024 as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed? Resolution 27-2024 as amended passes unanimously.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
I did want to thank Mr. Jason Salmon and Mrs. Leslie Porter Cabell for being here this evening, even though they didn't come up.
Good to see you. Thank you very much. Thanks, Bunky.
No, thank you.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
Let everybody know who you are. And then, you know, then you... Because I'm going to assume you know how to do all this. You're new, but I'm going to assume you're okay.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Angelie Chetel, CPA, the internal auditor for Wachamica County. I'm here to present Resolution Number 28-2024, accepting the self-assessment project on the office of the internal auditor.
Good. I'll stay out of it next time. Entertained motion from council to approve Resolution 28-2024. So move? Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Make your president. Thanks.
Okay, great. So, I did a review of everything that I could find in the office of the internal auditor. I looked at old reports, old communications, files on... and so forth. And so, I noted the history in the report, the auditors before me. There's been 78 reports... or 78 resolutions, I should say, of reports in the past. I did like comparisons of things, ways to improve possibly. I came up with schedule recommendations. The first one is, and the most important, is that the external assessment of the internal auditor has not been done, or does not appear to have been done, since the office was established. The IPF standards, those are referenced in the county code. In those standards, they require an external assessment of the IA function every three years. So, I've signed up for training on that. And for the next year's budget, I've included expenses for external auditors to come to my office. And then, the training is so that I can go to other auditor's offices. And I think that'll be good for, as well as developing this office, for how do other counties do things to improve the practices of the audit function. The other things that were done, the IA manual. I hope to present that next county council meeting in a work session so that the county can see it, the people can, that you can, to go from there on the manual. Just as FYI, the manual was created before the Wachamica County Code for the internal audit function. So, there's a lot of non-congruence there. There is a hotline management SOP standard operating procedure that's been drafted. I hope to present that next county council meeting for resolution. And the document retention schedule. I am not allowed to shred anything per Maryland law until Maryland has approved something. I've submitted it. I'm pending approval to clean up the office a little bit more for old documents. And then, I updated the website. I've removed, reorganized some of the reports. And there's a little bit more to do. But the... Getting the manual revised will then guide, like, the mission for the IA's office, and hence that part of the website. Do you have any questions for me?
And you did present us... I did review the... What you hinted at earlier, the annual risk assessment?
Yes.
Yeah, so... And you have your 10 goals that you also have there.
For the risk assessment?
Yeah.
For the future, yeah. And I would like to submit risk assessments more often to you guys annually so that I can get more feedback in designing the next audit plan so that I can more tackle the issues at the heart of the county.
Okay, very good. Any questions? All those in favor of Resolution 28-2024? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution 28-2024 passes unanimously.
Thank you!
Thank you very much. This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that I'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concern.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name's Melody Carter, and I'm a member of the Wachamica County Liquor Control Board, commonly known as the dispensary. I was appointed originally in 2017, and was recently appointed again by the Maryland governor. I brought with me today a picture of Pappy Van Winkle's Family Reserve Kentucky Street Bourbon Whiskey, 23 years. Just to show you, believe it or not, at most privately-owned liquor stores, at least the ones in our region, this fifth of bourbon would sell for $5,000. At the dispensary, it sells for the manufacturer's suggested retail price of $347. Small-batch specialty liquors products like this are enormously popular. There are a lot of enthusiasts for this kind of thing right here in Wachamica County. Selling them at a reasonable price is just one of the untold stories of the Wachamica County dispensary. The task force heard about it, and I think the dispensary policies concerning products like Pappy Van Winkle are one reason why the task force made only one recommendation to open up the wholesale side to the so-called hybrid model only. The task force chose not to recommend doing away with the dispensary, recognizing that the dispensary creates value for Wachamica County, customers, by providing products like this in quantities due to our size and purchasing power, and making them available to our customers at reasonable prices. When the full story of the Wachamica County dispensary is told, something the media never mentions, there's a lot more benefits to Wachamica County than just contributing $1 million annually to the budget. I probably shouldn't say just $1 million, because $1 million is still a lot of money, but it's only part of the story. If you have more questions about the benefits of the dispensary system, please ask any of us that are here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Good evening. I'm Victor Laws. I'm a resident of Wachamica County. And John, I'm glad you're feeling better, that you're doing well.
Now, Jeff is home.
Yeah.
I didn't give it to him.
Good to hear. And you and I can take pride in the Clippers being recognized tonight as Ben Clippers. I represent the Wachamica County dispensary. The county council decided not to put us on the formal agenda tonight and basically took the position that the best course is to let the legislative process run its course, that you're happy with the current bill. I'm here to tell you that House Bill 1340 still has not been revised. I looked at it about a half an hour ago. Well, I guess it's a little bit more than an hour and a half now. But it is far from a clean shell-to-may bill. I looked at it just before coming over to this meeting. And the version that's on the website of the General Assembly still prohibits beer and wine sales. Even the county council's letter reflecting the unanimous will of the council here to put beer and wine back into the dispensary only addresses part of the deficiency in the bill. It only addresses subsection C, which prohibit... which currently allows beer and wine. It didn't address subsection F of the bill, which talks about wine tastings. So, I just think that the county's... the county president's... County council president's lack of receptiveness to having us appear on your agenda reflects a misunderstanding of where the process is right now. There isn't a clean bill. The bill doesn't have a Senate counterpart right now. There's no cross-file. There are even issues with the distillery bill. If you got the letter from Richard Duval, who's identified... He's the counsel for the license commissioners. He's identified some problems with the dispensary bill. So, it still has to go to committee. It's supposed to go to committee on Friday. It's... It has to go through that process to get rid of the prohibition on beer and wine. And we're simply asking not just to correct what you said had to be fixed, but to address some common sense things that we've asked you to do that we think would strengthen the dispensary as we go forward. In other words, we're not trying to fight with you. We're just asking for a few accommodations or fixes to current law. To me, not to do so would be like going to a surgeon, and you go in for a gallbladder removal, and the surgeon sees a lump on another organ and says, "I'm not going to deal with that. I'm only here to remove the gallbladder." I don't think you'd want that if you were the patient. Or, if you don't like that analogy, if a roofer is replacing your roof, and the crew tears off the old roof and finds rotten boards underneath, I don't think you'd want the roofer to say, "Well, I'm only here to fix the roof, and I'm just going to overlay the rotten boards and put the new shingles on." You'd want them to fix other problems while they're in there to fix something. And that's how we see the subcommittee process. I've handed Ms. Hurley the four amendments that we're seeking. Again, I say I think they're common sense, and they would fix things in the existing law. One would allow liquor tastings. For some reason, the current law just allows tastings of wine. Well, the dispensary doesn't sell a lot of wine. We provided those figures to you a couple of weeks ago. About $600,000, I think it is, out of about $12 million in gross sales are wine. But for some reason, if a manufacturer comes out with a new liquor product, we can't do a promotional event based on that. And one of our amendments would fix that. And a second one is, there's a category, an entire category, missing from current law called ready-to-drink cocktails. These are low alcohol-level cocktails, but they do have liquor. They're not malt beverages or wine-based. The law doesn't really accommodate them right now, and we're asking for that to be written into the law so that they can be sold. They're very popular. But the current law, it's a category completely missing from current law. We've asked to dedicate the proceeds of the dispensary to the fire and police needs in Wachamica County. The public has repeatedly asked us to consider doing that. And we see right around the vicinity of store number one, which is the one on South Salisbury Boulevard, that there... There's homelessness, there's crime, there's drug. Unfortunately, our general manager knows exactly how Narcan is used now. You know, we have issues, and we think it would be appropriate to dedicate the profits coming from the dispensary to the fire and police. And we've asked for the effective date to be postponed by six months to January 1 to allow for transition to this new hybrid system. We hope you'll support these common sense amendments. I don't think they're a big ask or a heavy lift, but they would help the dispensary transition to this new reality of the hybrid system and enable it to continue to deliver for the county citizens and the wholesale and retail customers that the dispensary serves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laws.
All right. I guess we're all still painfully aware, over the course of the last year. I'm still Justin Collis. I've been employed by the Wachamica County dispensary as the general manager since October 28, 2003. As you're aware, I was also a member of the task force, which was put together by the Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Salisbury Committee to study the efficacy of the dispensary system itself. Now, early on, it appeared that the agenda was to find a way to state, "We don't need the dispensary." It looked like it was somewhat biased. However, as the meetings progressed and cooler heads prevailed, we were able to exchange information with the bar and restaurant owners and retailers. And what wound up happening was is that we demonstrated the value that can be delivered by the dispensary in multiple ways. One of the main ways that that can be accomplished is through the significant buying power of the dispensary. Our ability to buy in bulk at discount prices based on the highest volume deals, basically the Walmart model, allows a real and tangible benefit to smaller bars, restaurants, service clubs, and especially your VFWs, your American Legions, your fraternal orders. They have very low-volume sales. And they... Let's face it, they don't charge very much for their drinks, which is a big reason for their membership. So, their cash flow isn't what your larger accounts have at their disposal. So, basically, by us being able to buy the largest volume deals and pass them along to these organizations, smaller bars, restaurants, and accounts at a lower price than they could purchase them themselves, direct from the distributor, they benefit from the buying power, and the county benefits from the profit that still exists from being able to buy the largest volume deals. We also serve as a storage facility for these smaller accounts. Many of your smaller clubs, bars, restaurants, they don't have the space to buy in bulk from the distributors and store those products in a secure fashion so that some of it doesn't grow legs, and it's not there tomorrow when you show up to work. So, we believe that that is also a large benefit to the smaller accounts and your service clubs and what have you. So, contrary to what I know has been said in, you know, out there in the past and over the course of the last year, it wasn't all bullets flying and chairs being thrown. There was a lot of positive, you know, things that came out of this task force. Once everybody sat down and began to communicate, there was a lot of new understandings, both by the dispensary on things that the accounts were asking for, which we are doing our best to provide, but also understanding from the accounts about industry practices, bulk purchasing, things like that. So, it was actually a beneficial operation in the end. A couple examples... I got pages of them, but I'll just give you a handful in the interest of brevity. Couple examples, items like Malibu Rum, Bacardi Rum, Tito's Vodka. We buy in such a volume that even after a markup, that the bars and restaurants are getting it for far below than what they could purchase it for, unless they're going to attempt to buy in bulk. There are some items, like your Fireball and your Jameson Irish Whiskey. We can provide those items to them at over a dollar, sometimes a dollar twenty an ounce cheaper than they can buy them direct. So, if you add that up for the number of drinks in a bottle, they realized that purchasing them from the dispensary, they're going to make anywhere between 20 and could possibly make up to $30 more a bottle by buying that same product through the dispensary. And they're still contributing to the county budget. So, that's one benefit that was realized by... Two of the top three accounts in the county were also members of that task force. And if you have a conversation with them, they will tell you that they did come out of this exercise with that understanding. So, it was actually a positive experience, contrary to, you know, everyone thinking that it was a brawl. So, thank you for your time.
Hello. My name's Jeanette Taylor. I'm also a resident of Wachamica County. And I've been on the Liquor Board Control Board since 2018. And I was just reappointed by the new governor of Maryland. As some of you may be aware, I was a previously... I previously owned Taylor's Barbecue with my ex-husband up until the sale of the current ownership group, the new ownership group. Therefore, I'm familiar with the restaurant business and the significance of alcohol beverage to the profitability of... for profitability of a restaurant. I recently traveled with my board members to Annapolis to testify on House Bill 1340 before the House of Delegates Economic Matters Committee. I thought you might be interested in some of the things that we heard in Annapolis. At the last election, the voters made the decision that our state is going to allow not just medical marijuana, but recreational marijuana. So, now our representatives in Annapolis are wrestling with how to deliver the marijuana with appropriate controls. They are pledging not to repeat the mistakes made with alcohol distribution, illustrated by the issues many jurisdictions are having that allow liquor stores virtually on every street corner. This county is wrestling with the same thing. Recently, both the city of Salisbury and Wachamica County have been discussing which zoning districts are appropriate for the distribution of recreational marijuana. Suddenly, people in the know are taking a second look and saying that the dispensary model makes sense. In Wachamica County, when it comes to the distribution of hard liquor, we have a public dispensary and three private store licenses to sell spirits. Beer and wine and retails are common, but the number of outlets for hard liquor is controlled. Instead of an antiquated system, which time has passed... which in time has passed, maybe the dispensary system like we have in Wachamica County is worth repeating. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. President Cannon and council members. My name is Don E. Walt, and I am the chairman of the Wachamica County Liquor Control Board. Like the others here, I was reappointed by the governor of Maryland. But my purpose is to talk about the task force. And here's some examples. Although changes to the dispensary system have been under discussion for over a year, the task force waited until early December to make its final recommendations. There has been a lack, and this, I think, is extremely important. There's been a lack of public input that has never been publicly advertised to the public on this matter. There have been preconceived agendas and resignations by people on the task force. And a clean bill to implement the term "shell-to-may," a change the council asked for, still has not materialized. And finally, the task force never invited the chairman to the task force meetings. And that's me. And I... My feelings have really hurt. It was wrong. But anyhow, ultimately, the task force brought to light some benefits. The dispensary has contributed $1 million to the county's revenue in recent years, and $8 million since 2016. The dispensary's purchasing power is passed on in the form of lower prices and better service to numerous organizations, clubs, restaurants, and which are wholesale... Which are our wholesale customers. Dispensary delivers fair prices. In nearby counties that got rid of dispensaries, prices have risen. They are higher than our prices in many instances. The dispensary offers delivery service currently free to our wholesalers, customers, and basically on demand, not just on a weekly or infrequent basis to large orders. And we offer availability and a fair price, as Justin pointed out, especially in small-batch products like Pappy Van Winkle. I've also been a member of the Wachamica Board for a long time, since 2008. We've had several board members who were appointed, who came as opponents to the dispensary system, intending to dismantle it, only to have them become proponents after seeing up close what it does for our county. We decided not to oppose the shell-to-may approach, even though the hybrid system is... Didn't fly in Somerset and Worcester County. But we asked only that they support four proposed amendments, which, Vic brought to your attention, allow tasting and sampling events for new liquor products, not just wine. And we don't sell that much wine. And the law permits wine tasting. Fix the omission of ready-to-drink cocktails in the law. Dedicate the profits from the dispensary to the fire and the sheriff's department in Wachamica County. Postpone the effective date to January 1, 2025, to allow an orderly transition to this new approach. These are modest, common sense amendments, which would allow the dispensary to continue delivering needed value to Wachamica County and keep delivering quality service and reasonable prices to our customers. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Walt.
Hello, everyone. Before I start, does anybody else want to speak about liquor? No, there's a reason why I ask that. Hello, everyone. My name is David James. I am a resident of Wachamica County. And I'm actually here speaking about something a little bit different. I represent the west side of Wachamica County. No, I'm not elected. I believe I'm selected. And that's different. I want to talk about a place down in... On Royal Oak Road. It's two places now. One on Royal Oak Road, and the other one's on Sandy Hill Lane in the rural area, way down there on Qualico. There's two resource rehab facilities down there. And the people down there are wondering why. There's no police enforcement down there. These people are down there... I'm actually one of the citizens down there who sent me what Resource 180 is. It is... Resource 180 is a low-intensity residential treatment program that provides substance abuse treatment in a structural, sober living environment. We offer three separate locations in Maryland, Baltimore, Tannity Town, and Qualico. Now, a while back, the popular here facility was... There was an offer to the county to have that for a rehab facility, for a dollar. We turned it down because we didn't want other places' problems here. Well, since we turned that down, now they're moving into the neighborhoods down there. There's no law enforcement down there. There are citizens that are saying they're seeing people meet their drug people and other people down there. And unfortunately, if we get... This isn't against the liquor board, okay? Believe me. But if they can get liquor and stuff down there, we're going to have a bigger problem. I'm not... I'm against what y'all doing, whatever y'all do. I am a preacher, so I'm not going to say that I promote it. But what I am concerned about is these rehab facilities down there. Because the more access they get to different things... Because the more access they get to different things, the more the community is at risk. We have been told to contact the sheriff's office and from what I understand, they are doing that. But some things are seen as not an important, not as an emergency. And since that's about forty-five minutes to an hour away, by the time law enforcement get down there, they're gone. So my concern or their concern is, number one, if we turn down Poplar Hill being a spot for people doing this, why put them in the residential areas? The other question is, if we do that, how come we don't have law enforcement? So council, if you can, please, I know President Cannon and Jeff been working on it and James, please, 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 think of those that are the voters and citizens down there. I have, there's an eighty-nine-year-old woman down there named Ms. Maddox. She was my daycare mother. I'm very concerned about her safety. These people are not saying, again, I'm a preacher. I believe in people having second chances. However, if you give somebody opportunity with no supervision, there's a chance there's going, something's not going to happen right. So I just want everybody to consider that. Please, please, please look into it. God bless you. Have a good one.
I'd like to, David.
Yes.
I'd like to address that.
Oh, by the way, hello.
Hello. They have many, um, in Salisbury, city of Salisbury. And I think if you're interested in really learning more, contact the Hudson Center. Because some of these, and share your concerns, because some of these houses have residents that live in these homes.
Yes, ma'am.
So you just don't have, you just don't have it down in Quantico. They're in, they're in various parts of the city. And like you said, the people deserve a second chance. But if you have a problem house, get the address and turn that house in. And I would start with the Hudson Center because I don't think they're run by the county.
No, ma'am.
No, they're not run by the county, but you, I would start with the Hudson Center and get educated on what they're trying to do.
Yes, ma'am. Just one last thing. I noticed that I was watching some of the city.
Dave, uh, Dave, you have to come to those, for the microphone.
I apologize. I promise I won't.
No, it's okay. Pac-14 can't hear you back there.
All right. Real quickly, um, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. I have been watching the city council meetings and they've actually pushed these houses out of a lot of the city areas because people are not feeling safe. Again, the biggest problem is down there is that these are elderly people who are looking out their window and they're seeing people in their yard messing with stuff. So, thank you. I will, I will check into that, but please, 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 just pray for them at least. Thank you.
Any comments?
Hi, Bruce Robson, Wycomico County. Just had a couple, couple quick things really. I wanted to comment on, um, the issue of, I think, last council meeting of new policies regarding recreation and parks. And the question was raised, you know, what are, what are gun owners' rights in those, in those areas? Uh, and, and I just wanted to, you know, give another perspective, you know? I personally am not a, not a gun owner. I feel very uncomfortable around guns. And in this day and age, not, not surprisingly, when my wife and I go almost anywhere, we say, Bruce, hope, hope, hope there's not going to be a shooting. I mean, not, not so much in jest anymore. And so the idea of being safe places is very appealing to somebody like me. And, and I'm sure I'm not alone, just like on the other side there aren't. So I just wanted to, to share that sincere thought there. As you know, I've been here many times about litter and I just sort of wanted to give you a quick update and, and a request for something to think about. We've been going out, still going out and feel proud and things are looking good or looking better at least. Signs, some sort of signs we could put up while we're out there, I think would be helpful on many, many, or a couple levels. Safety, number one. Perhaps more important, PR, you know? Wycomico Clean, come help us. You know, we're out there in our, our vests, you know? And, and I think that might be a helpful thing that would ask the county and the city to consider helping us with. Also, we're working on a, an outline for a PR campaign. We think, of course, the issue has to be addressed at the source. We can pick up all day long, the county can, other groups can. But if we can't have some action at the source, you know, it's, it's, it's a long, hard road. And, and we'll, we'll share that once, once we've got it together. It's just meant to be something to spur some ideas and thinking. So, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I, I can tell you guys are doing a great job.
Dan Beebe from Laurel, Delaware. As promised, I wanted to update the council on the dog situation over in the Sharp Town area. Originally, there was, uh, we were trying to say it was a commercial and they were trying to say it's not been proven, it's commercial. There was three criteria for that commercial designation. The dogs must be bred there, the dogs must be raised there, and the puppies must be sold for profit. These first two, the first two of those have been, uh, cons, or not condensed, contested, but the kennel owners have admitted to the fact that the dogs were bred there. They've admitted to the fact that the dogs were raised there, but they're claiming that the dogs and the puppies that are there are not sold for profit. The zoning administrator claimed that there was no proof she was selling the puppies, even though the circumstantial evidence was strong via social media, media pictures of puppies for sale that were proven to originate from the property in question. That the dogs being sold in the ad were of the same breeds as were on the property. Then in Circuit Court, answering to a nuisance barking citation, the owner of the kennel, Ms. Dorothy Carter, admitted to selling the puppies under oath. When the administrator was asked later in the same Circuit Court hearing whether Ms. Carter was breaking any zoning laws, he answered, "Not at the time of my visits to the site." However, he also testified, he had heard something in Ms. Carter's testimony he had not heard before as to the selling of the puppies. Then later in a public hearing, for special exception, the planning and zoning claimed he could not remember the context of the question in court. When he had heard her admit to the selling, was, I asked, I ask you, was it not his responsibility, the cop that walks the beat for zoning infractions, to clarify that context? Especially being fully aware the chaos and compliment, or complaints that the dogs were causing in the neighborhood? The special exception hearing was held three months after the Circuit Court hearing. So, the kennel is breaking Wycomico laws every day. January twenty-third citation guilty. March second citation guilty. March second citation appealed to Circuit Court, guilty. August second, it was deemed insufficient, insufficient evidence. And November fifth was thrown out of court based on the failure of the prosecuting attorney to show in, um, the infraction happened in Wycomico County. So three out of five and, and one of the two we lost was just a, um, I'm not sure, I can't think of a word right now. So the kennel owner wants the county to believe that after spending a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for the property and an additional tens of thousands of dollars in employees, kennels, fencing, dog food, that one hundred percent of the dogs bred on that property are donated to great and worthy causes. And there is absolutely no monies being generated from the sale of the dogs they admit to breeding, even though they routinely advertise for sale these same breeds that they have on the properties. They sell puppies that were born somewhere else. They admitted to selling the dogs in court and planning and zoning is allowing them to go back on that admission. And we ask why? After the three hundred dog puppy mill scandal in two thousand and seven, there was a committee thought to regulate these issues. It was talked about by the county. Mr. Aaron Bosamo, the executive director of Wycomico County Humane Society, stated in a two thousand and seventeen Channel Forty-seven news story that one of the issues that needed to be addressed was the tightening up of breeding laws. He said, and I quote from the article, "We are trying to bring the number of dogs from fifteen to six or eight, somewhere on that level, and that is also what I have recommended to the county," end quote. What happened to that and where did he get the number fifteen? When did sixty become okay? The kennel uses, used three separate Wycomico County breeders in their comps for their application for special exception. Neither example they use have more than five dogs. Good evening. Thank you for your time.
Any other public comments? Seen none. Council comments?
I just want to say, this is Honoring Women Month. And I was trying to make a list of women that was part of my life, but it's been so many great women in this community that has been an asset to everyone that I didn't want to leave nobody out. But just want the men and children to honor their mothers and their grandparents because without the mothers and grandparents, they would not be here today. That's all I have to say.
Joe?
All righty. Good evening. I am glad to be back. I missed the last meeting I attended by Zoom and I will say it's a little different perspective being up there and looking at on the council as being here, but, um, it was enjoyable. Tonight, we had a presentation by PKS as far as the audit and I want to thank them and thank the finance department. Audits like that is very detailed and I'm sure stressful on a lot of people. You know, it seems as though we've got kind of a windfall, I guess, as far as finances go right now and that's a good thing. We're going to be able to fix a lot of things that the county has been wanting to fix for a long time. But we need to remember where that money comes from. That money comes from income taxes, property taxes, fees, disparity grant. Basically, it comes from taxpayers. So, um, you know, we've had people at the podium over the years saying, oh, it's free money. Well, there's no free money. It all comes from the taxpayers. And we're the ones up here that manage that and try to see the best way to, to spend it. We wouldn't be where we're at today, as Josh said a few minutes ago, um, as far as our reserves go and the situation that our county is in financially right now without the disparity grant. We wouldn't be where we're at right now without the liquor board giving us a million dollars a year. We wouldn't be where we're at right now, you know, for the people in Wycomico County that didn't get out here and go to work every day and pay their taxes. You know, our nursing home, which over the years has, um, kind of been a little bit of a burden, not really. We, I think we give money to them one time, once or twice in the past few years. They showed a profit. But what we, what we want to remember is we've had delegates sit in front of us in the past few months telling us that things don't look so good at the state level. And I remember Senator Johnny Mouts saying, be careful. John, you were here when the HUR, HUR money, the roads money was cut by seven million dollars a year, when the county council, or the county taxpayers had to pick up half the pensions from the, um, teacher's pension. At one time, the state got in a jam and decided to cut out, I think it was seven million dollars a year we lost as far as, um, as far as roads money, which at that time was our roads money and we had to pick all that up. So, that's, while, while it really looked good tonight and there's, it's grateful that we're going to have some monies to get out here and do some of the repairs that we need to do, we need to remember that it's not always been that, that good or that rosy or whatever you want to call it. So, I think we need to think about that every dollar that comes into the county is important, no matter where it comes from. And not discount, um, discount something and say that we don't need that money or we don't need this or we don't need that. You know, I was joking with councilman Win while ago, all this money, maybe we need to give some of it back to the citizens. But, um, I don't know that, that would be a great thing to do. But anyway, but we'll get to fix stuff. That's the best thing. Members of the liquor dispensary come to us tonight. Now, I listened to that, um, hearing today. In fact, I listened to it the other day, but I went back and listened to it again. The hearing in Annapolis, um, I was kind of shocked that it was implied, and I think they, somebody up at the podium brought that up today, tonight, that this was an open process. And it was kind of implied there at the, um, the hearing in Annapolis that, that it was vetted openly and that's, that, that didn't happen. And that's, that's a shame that didn't happen. The meetings, um, apparently were by invitation. I guess you could have invited yourself. People didn't know they were going on, so they didn't go. But, um, the liquor dispensary, um, the, the members that were there, you know, agreed to work with, um, you know, this group that was put together. Unfortunately, some of them quit because they predetermined agenda, so to say. I think that was a poor way to handle what was, um, being done. A few years ago, we went through the process of trying to get an elected school board. And Jim Mathias was a senator at that time and the council had struggled with it for a year or two, trying to get things done in Annapolis. And, and Jim Mathias made the comment, he said, "You guys need folks," whatever, there was girls, ladies on here at the time too, "you all need to do some public hearings. You need to really get this out in the public. Do the public hearings and we'll see to it it makes it to the floor in Annapolis." That's what happened. We did public hearings and that's when that passed in Annapolis. So, we're past that point now, I guess, of having public hearings of what we, um, you know, what we want to do. And I, I guess, John, I'm not sure whether this is appropriate, whether we can do it. Apparently, there's another meeting Friday, another committee that we, um, the council can possibly take a consensus to send a letter up supporting these amendments they brought to us tonight.
I wouldn't do that tonight, Joe. I mean, we don't have it, the council doesn't have the benefit of having had it in the briefbook.
The meeting's Friday, so I mean, we've got, other, other than that, I guess, any council member can send a letter up on their own if they want to.
I don't think so. I think any, I think a council member independently sending up that type of, those type of suggestions, uh, that's why we have a system whereas we vote as a body and then we send the letter up. If only five agree, that's how it is. It goes up as a united body. But I wouldn't recommend that individual council members start doing this. I was going to address this one under presidential comments anyway, uh, because it's a very delicate, it's a very delicate machine there sometimes and they'll throw it out immediately if they sense any, any type of, um, you know, concerns, especially based on those local government, the members of the local body.
I don't think any council member can submit a letter to anybody they want to.
Don't recommend it. Not, not when you're sending, not when you're dealing with legislative bills in Annapolis. From what the, from what the Eastern Shore delegation tells us, it goes up, it goes on the floor, you leave it alone or else you're finding that it's going to be put in the drawer for the next year.
Never heard of that. I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
Josh?
I'll just be brief and say, uh, I did want to thank, um, I know Bunky Lufman, who's our director of administration, and Steve Miller, head of parks, uh, recreation parks. He's, uh, did send them constituent issue this morning and within five hours, the issue was fixed and taken care of. So that's a, I always want to, you know, make sure we appreciate those who do really good work and, and that's, that's exactly what we want out of our, our government. And then lastly, I'll say, uh, my just past weekend, I, I participated in the Tim Canard Five K Ten Mile Run, um, which I know Lynn Engold on our staff is, 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 has been involved with many, uh, of these runs. I just want to take a moment and say, um, I just want to take a moment and say how much of a great, you know, culture that we have in Wycomico County and Salisbury when it comes to fitness and trying to make oneself better. I think that's really something to be proud of, and I don't think we get nearly enough attention to that, and of course, I want to thank Lynn for all of her work, for, she does, you know, behind the scenes and so much of that, and to say that I finished second to last in my, in my age group. Room for improvement.
You finished. You finished. I don't know if I could have done that. Any other comments? No. Under presidential comments, most I think what I'd like to probably address is what Mr. Loff said, and we, I appreciate you being here, Vic. We have, this community has a lot of respect for your opinion and your, you know, your, your skills as, as an attorney here in this, in this community. I also appreciate your diligence as far as following it up on the bill. From what I understand, I've been told that they amended the bill, they amended the bill before they put it out on the floor. They had anticipated that the council was going to remove the beer and wine sales. That's what they had anticipated was going to happen. I think it wasn't until the, you know, the midnight hour where things changed, and at the meeting, it was decided not to do that. So the bill that the drafters had presented, all of a sudden, they said, "Oh, now we have to start changing things." So that's how it was explained to me, and I appreciate you also bringing up, as far as you were talking about subsection F, I guess, and, you know, parts of that as well. Johnny Mouts and I did have, we were playing phone tag today, so I have not talked to him yet, but I think the reason he wanted to talk to me probably was about that specific bill and those portions of it that he has concerns about. But I, you know, I had to try to take the lead from them, and I know you wanted to have a meeting here tonight. There were two reasons I couldn't do it. One is that we still have six more work sessions tonight, and it's 8 o'clock. That was part of it. The other part is, from, you know, in talking to the Eastern Shore delegation, part of what I shared with Joe is that they let, they say, you know, there's a very fine system in Annapolis to a certain degree, whereas they're very rushed, they're trying to get things done at the last minute, and because they're so rushed, if you have, if they have any, any sense whatsoever that maybe this bill wasn't ready, or maybe even the, the body, you know, the, the county that's presenting this bill, because it's a Wycomico County bill, if they have any reservations whatsoever, they're going to pull it, they're going to, they're going to drop it from the floor, and you'll have to come back the next year to do it. So we're trying to get everything as is in line right now, and certainly we'll call tomorrow to find out, you know, if everything is how the council endorsed it, because we've said from day one to the, to the, to the Eastern Shore delegation that the only thing that we're going to allow to go to the floor is what this council endorsed, because that's the process. And we've had that, that process, that discussion with the Eastern Shore delegation on more than one, on more than one occasion, where we don't even want the Eastern Shore delegation introducing county legislative bills without first reviewing that through the council. There were some concerns. I know you had discussed some amendments that you were looking at as well, and I got phone calls. I was, I was shocked, because giving testimony and suggesting amendments, you know, to the effect that, you know, something, I guess innocuous as moving it to January 1st, something not so innocuous such as trying to get the state of Maryland to suggest through Wycomico County and the citizens of Wycomico County that the funds are going to be earmarked to, no matter what the cause might be, that's, that's sort of overs, you know, sort of bypasses the processes that are already in place. The fact that it doesn't get vetted locally is a concern, and you don't have work sessions, public work sessions, you don't have public hearings, you have nothing. So I, I would hope that any type of, you know, amendments or anything to that effect, anything in the future, that we could look at that or review that independently, you know, together, to try to observe that, so that we don't jeopardize the work that we've already done. So that's pretty much where I am with it. Again, I do appreciate the fact that you've looked into it, and you've been following it as closely as you have, and I'm hoping that when I talk to Johnny Mouts tomorrow, that he'll say, "Yeah, everything's okay. We just had to make some corrections to some of the, to some of the smaller details." I also suspect there may be one or two items that had not been corrected, and that might be your subsection F, that they might leave alone so that it can be addressed next year, specifically because at this late hour, they really don't want to upset the entire process of what we've done, so.
Jeff? I'm sorry. Jeff, did you have any comments?
John, thank you. I just want to say thank you to Ashley and the team at PKS for a very well-done, comprehensive presentation on the audit, and just thank you to Angelie as well for the, for the same thing. We appreciate the good work she does for the council, so. And always good to see everybody out there. Sorry I'm not there in person, but, you know, maybe next time.
Well, we appreciate you sitting in, Jeff, because even though you're not here, it doesn't mean you still feel great, and, and we all know what you're dealing with, so thank you very much.